...
Okay. Today is Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. At this time, please silence your electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1974, this city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. So that's back there. If you'd like to fill out those forms. I think there's probably only two forms there, it looks like. So, at this time, we would like to open the public discussion on budgets, salaries, and additional appropriations. So we'll start off with Mr. Hunter for the schools. You want to come up, please? For the school budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council.
I provided you about a month ago with this year's budget. If you took a close look at it, you'll notice that the budget is very similar to last year. A little bit of an increase in some areas as far as the advertised part, but actually, in reality, it'll be almost exactly the same as last year because they will reduce most of those budgets. The one that wouldn't be reduced would be the debt service, and it is very similar to last year with the difference in AV that we have. So, really wouldn't anticipate our tax rate being much more than it was last year. It could even be less. Don't really know that until after the DLGF makes their cuts, but wasn't any really increase in any of the areas. Be willing to entertain any questions you might have concerning our budget.
Okay, any questions, guys? It's awful big.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next, let's go, let's get over to the airport budget. Two eighteen.
Don's going to do the talking.
Okay.
He's a better talker than I am.
Okay.
I'm here representing the Greensburg Municipal Airport, or of course, an executive branch of the city running the airport. Your responsibility is to approve our budget. We require no monies from the City of Greensburg, which you are our fiscal entity, and approve our budget. You'll see here, the paper I passed out is also on the same papers you've got just recently, but it's just formatted differently, a little easier to read. You'll see that our budget request, eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, and they're itemized accordingly. You'll see that our income, our estimated income for 2018 is ninety-seven nine. And you'll see we have cash on hand in our accounts, two hundred and seventy-six thousand plus, almost two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And these are for our day-to-day operating expenses. This budget was approved by the Airport Board in the August meeting. All our monies are handled by the City Clerk Treasurer. In fact, we pay her to do so. And that's our budget. And we'll entertain any questions anybody has. If not, of course, we're always available to you at any time, so.
In the budget that was emailed to us, was there a forty-one thousand dollar pay down for all the loans?
Right, and that's not in our day-to-day operating expenses, but there is, we make two six-month payments, a little over twenty thousand dollars apiece for that.
Shouldn't that be included within your expenses for that?
Well, it could be, it's in your original, it's in your original paper. That's the only paper that's not put on this one because it's, again, not a day-to-day operating expense. But as you can see, we've got plenty of cash to cover that, so. But we do pay a couple of payments per year against that original loan, so.
One twenty-one.
We, I should mention here, again, you'll see our income is ninety-seven nine. We budget well under that income, and last year, we underspent our budget by almost twenty thousand dollars. So we've been very conservative in our numbers here.
Yeah, if you put the forty-one thousand, it'll be over your budget.
No, we, no, it won't be over our budget. We'll be, we'll be well under it, so.
That's fine, that's what we'll do. I just think it should be shown in the expenses.
Okay, it is, okay, it is shown in your other, in your other paperwork that you got. It's shown in that one. That was just a little jumbled in the top. A little hard to decipher, so we just put these other items in these squares right here.
And then, one other question I had on this, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars for the rotary fuel fund.
Yes.
That's income from the sale of fuel?
That's an account that's maintained to maintain the fuel account. And again, it's, like I said, it's a rotary account, so any money that's taken in by the fuel farm system goes into that account, and then we pay for our fuel out of that account. So that, that particular account's all for incoming and outgoing for fuel.
Any other questions, guys? Yeah, ladies?
If not, again, to repeat, we're available to you at any time. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll go through the city budget. We had a workshop, what was the date? Last week? So, we had a pretty good discussion on the budget. Is there anything that, do we need to discuss anymore or less?
I guess the only question that I have is, do we want to have another workshop to discuss it, or were we happy with the recommendations we made then?
I personally think we should have one more workshop to see that the things we discussed, how they-
To make sure they are included.
Make sure they are, so they're not coming back later, like you're getting.
I agree.
Actually, did you have any correction sheets to add to work?
Um, I actually was going to ask pages here with us tonight from up mall. Was there any good news for them?
No, I, I mean, I have this one budget, but I had one twenty-eight point one, but-
Okay.
Um, this contains what I understand is the most current budget. I can say a few words about your budget if you would like, or-
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, we're going to at least, as it is, staying as now, we're going to go with our first reading tonight, keep on track, so.
Okay. Go first reading and then change from the second.
Right, yeah.
Yes, this is first reading, so you can actually lower the budget before adoption. And your adoption is scheduled for October the 2nd. So changes can be made anytime from now through October 2nd. As it stands now, with the most recent changes you've made, you actually have a very, a very good budget in the general fund. It's a better-than-balanced budget. Your receipts right now are projected at about six point six, six point six million, and your dispersments are roughly six point five. So you've got a better-than-balanced budget. Some other funds will be utilizing cash reserves, like Motor Vehicle Highway, the two pension funds, a couple other smaller funds, but you're utilizing reserves that are there, and it's for one-time capital purchases. So at this point, at least from, from our view of your budget, there really isn't any further reductions that are needed to get balanced, if that's what you're trying to do. So, again, your, your general fund looks great at this point. And this is the most recent copy of the budget. You feel free to pass it around. I'm sorry there's burned copies, but it is also on Gateway for you to view as well.
Well, it'd be kind of hard for us to go through it right now.
Yeah.
If you had a workshop, that stuff would be wrong.
Right, we'd want it before then, and that way we could go through it.
Right.
So when would be an acceptable date? Two weeks from today, or two we, oh, we go back to Monday, I guess, right? Eighteenth, maybe?
I'll do the eighteenth. I'm good.
Good?
Good.
Yep.
So why don't we do the eighteenth at six or seven?
No, we're early, six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Okay.
Eighteenth, six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Play it, you'll tell me about an hour and four.
Got you, Darren.
Actually, in this budget we have our sitting front, this is the thousand-dollar budget, or seven.
Seven.
Well, it's the seven fifty, kind of both. It's the sev, it was the seven fifty, but the twenty-two thousand is put in the council's budget.
For the, for the possibility of a thousand.
But since then, so that's one big update. Since then, that has been removed.
Okay. So seven fifty is the highest we can go, right?
Yeah, I think we could just have it before, before then. I'm good. We could look at it.
What'd you say?
I was just saying, we could have it before the eighteen. A new question.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so, let's go to ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty, city budget, two thousand and eighteen. Twenty?
No, it's the first reading.
We have sixteen, seventeen.
Probably what that is, is this sheet that this is actually like a part of Gateway. We will actually have this ordinance, so final reading of this is just a small portion.
But I have it. It was, it was emailed to us.
Oh, it's not in the pack.
I don't know if it's-
I didn't.
Okay, so what is this, two thousand seventeen dash sixteen?
Dash sixteen.
Is that for the city's budget?
Sixteen thirty dollars.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Two thousand seventeen dash sixteen? Okay, have a discussion on two thousand seventeen dash seventeen? That's for the, uh, salaries. Any discussion on that? Okay. Then we've got two thousand seventeen dash nineteen. Just the water and waste. Okay, Donna, was this changed on this? For the planning and zoning? Is that the right rate?
I emailed the, if you printed out what I emailed, that's, I haven't made any changes to that yet. That was, there was no ranges. The only ranges that were in here was for part-time people and exempt employees. As, as of the one I emailed, I believe it was Friday.
Well, the discussion we had was that if we put seven fifty straight across the board, we have two employees that are thirty-five hours, not forty. So the question is, does the thirty-five hours get the same raise, which is going to be higher because they work less hours?
The question is, is it same to be pro-rated?
If it's paid, if they're paid by the hour, I think they get the same hourly rate.
Then what do you, how's the seven fifty, if you figure straight across?
It's the same hourly rate. It's, it's an hourly raise.
Okay, so it's going to be larger for a thirty-five?
Not if they're hourly.
If they work forty hours versus thirty-five hours, then I'm, I get paid five hours more.
Yeah, but the forty-hour person will get the four seven fifty, thirty-five hour person.
They're going to get?
I think that's the question, are we going to pro-rate it, or are we going to-
Right, we have two voids that says-
Divide that out by forty, or, and then divide it out by thirty-five.
Right.
Right. I think what Jamie's saying is, we just give them all the same hourly rate decrease.
You divide it by forty, and then they get, or they get there.
I figured it at thirty-six cents an hour, based on a forty-hour salary, but it just adds to what your base was, no matter how many hours you work. But I figured the seven fifty on a two thousand eighty-eight hour, or annual work, which is four hours. That's the way I looked at it, but.
Well, but if you're going to go straight across seven fifty, then everybody should get seven fifty. That's my way of looking at it. Now, one, it's really basically one person. Because right now, we have a range for my secretary. She works thirty-five hours. So, I just wanted, didn't want to prove this ordinance through the first reading, and it's not right, or it's not a, we're going to cut it down. That makes sense.
The budget that was presented to us was that seven fifty for every single employee?
I mean, and really, this, it's based on the hourly rate, though, right?
On the utility side, yes.
Right, two thousand seventeen dash nineteen. And that would be the only hourly person affecting my debt, right?
Yeah.
The difference that the mayor's talking about on the salary ordinance for the utilities, I took what the last year's was, I included that in the email, added thirty-six cents to it, and it became the new hourly rate. On the city's salary ordinance, they have a range for the mayor's secretary for planning, and for the custodian, and part-time help. And Ashley, if there's anybody else, I'm not sure. But the utilities doesn't have that on there. If that's what, if the intention is to be the same on both, because we pay, utilities pay half, half of the mayor's secretary's salary, half of the city employee's secret, salaries that are on the utility ordinance, as well as some of the exempt employees.
I think, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, it basically came down to, it was going to affect two people, I believe, and it was like forty-one cents versus thirty-six cents for a thirty-five-hour person over a forty-hour person per hour.
Or if the range should be on this, on the utility's salary, the most you could pay would be what's on here. But the utilities for that same employee or on the city side, it has a bigger range, so the top end would be higher. So if that's the intent, then this one would need to be changed to be like the city's ordinance, or vice versa. All depends what the intent is, and I think that's what the mayor is asking, if it's looked at pro-rated or not.
The budget that was presented to us was every employee's getting seven fifty.
That's the way I took it.
And that's, yeah.
If we break that down into hourly, though, and then you take your overtime, it's going to be given in more than seven hundred fifty.
Well, but the thirty-five ain't going to get them, no.
But I'm, I'm opening up another camp for them, Derek.
Well, what I, all I want to do is, you're wanting to have another workshop to discuss this.
Let's discuss that in a higher degree.
But I want to make sure that it's in this, so that we can cut it back, you know? Once you read, once you read this, if you pass this ordinance without that change, then we can't, the way I look at it, can't do anything, right?
I agree.
With that right page.
You couldn't write that.
Okay, because I wanted to make sure that, that everybody was treated, you know, the way it was looking, and that's the way I thought we were talking about, seven fifty straight across the board. So.
So I say we pass it on the seven hundred fifty motion, and then if we take, we still can take some away.
Correct.
Yes.
That works.
Almost like a Dr. Seuss book here.
Yes. But the ordinance that you have, that was sent to you last Friday, did not have that in there.
Just, just a quick, I mean, because I struggle with amending it, just so we can talk about possibly amending it again. My, my intent was at seven fifty, divided by forty hours, if they worked thirty-five hours, then they get seven-eighths of that, seven. So rather than modify this, I'd be okay to pass it as is, versus modifying it just so we can talk about it and then re-modify it.
But once you take it out, you can't add it.
Right.
I mean, I think we need to, I mean, it's, we're rarely talking about one person in this. Because Sarah falls in that range I have. It's whatever.
Well, and I did have to, the one employee that I'm trying to get, I actually talked about the budget workshop, to the same base rate that Jamie had asked about, that their raise would be, I don't think we're running out. I think it was, I'd say it was going to be like a total of like twelve hundred. But then there, I thought also, on, on the city's side, doesn't that affect two employees?
Just Sarah and London.
And the custodian, as far as what the share that was?
Well, he's forty hours.
I haven't in, I don't have it in as a range, though.
No, but he's forty hours, so he's basic salary. So.
How are we talking about this workshop?
Okay. So that was on twenty seventeen dash nine? Okay. Also, those are on three, I have, actually, is that right? Nineteen, sixteen, seventeen?
Fifteen, additional appropriations.
Okay.
Twenty sixteen, seventeen, nineteen.
That's Sarah, we're all on fifteen. Okay, fifteen, sorry, thanks. Uh, then we have the additional appropriations for one million, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three.
Mark?
That's not part of the budget, though.
No, but it's appropriation. I mean, because there's something else we missed on the budget. Because we're already at the airport budget. Okay, so we're done with budgets. So they're on appropriation. And that was a local match on that grant funding, I believe. We're on, we're mark. Is this what that one million, thirty-nine thousand, thousand is?
Correct, because we put up, we took the money we received in the, in our match money, and I believe the state board of council required we put it in a separate fund.
Right.
So that we can disperse that, that money has to be appropriated for spending. And you, as a fiscal body, therefore, have to approve that appropriation so we can pay the bills. And that's what you have before you.
Okay. And then Hazmat Fund, we have, any other questions on the road deal? And then Hazmat, we have ten thousand. And then just these.
I think that was where the turnout, you have most of the turnout.
Okay. Mood funds for that turnout here, okay. Okay, is that clear? Okay, it's like you guys. Okay. Is there anything else we need to discuss in the public meeting? Okay, do you have any more questions, guys? In buying? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public meeting.
Make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public meeting's closed. Now we will go to a regular monthly meeting. At seven thirty. Regular meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order at this time. Please silence electronic devices again. Rule call.
Brian, I think it's here, Kevin Cleveland.
Here.
Darren Cogginson.
Here.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
There are whole ones here.
Okay, y'all should have received your minutes for August the 7th. Was there any corrections to the minutes?
Who's approved?
Okay, second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay. Whole business, second and final reading on ordinance twenty seventeen dash fourteen. Ashley?
This is just the more of a, that we talked about as the nineteen one, uh, respect for the twenty seventeen, we're being, we have now, uh, forty-seven thousand, six seventy-one ninety-eight.
Okay, any questions about this, guys?
That's going to the general fund.
That's going to the general plan. Yes.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, that's all the old business. New business, Ashley, first reading of two thousand eighteen budgets.
The main budget is twenty, right?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we pass, do you want to do them individually, or do you want to do them all together?
Can we separate it out to schools?
Oh, yeah, well, I meant the city ones, so twenty seventeen dash twenty, uh, twenty seventeen dash sixteen, twenty seventeen dash seventeen, twenty seventeen dash nineteen, and, wow. Fifteen is it? I don't mind, we can put fifteen in there as well, twenty seventeen dash fifteen for the additional appropriations. All right, motion, we pass those four.
Okay, now, is the utility one with the change on the seven fifty?
No changes.
No changes.
Just be first read.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
You said fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Then the school budget.
I'll make a motion, we pass the Greensboro Community School Budget, two thousand eighteen, on first read.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Second.
Second, just saying.
Do you want a motion on the airport budget, or is that included in on?
Well.
Is that in with twenty twenty? Or two thousand seventeen?
Airport budget.
Computer's my flight.
Yeah. Yep, you're right. I think we're okay there. Right? Okay. And then, now I need a, on the appropriation ordinance, twenty seventeen.
Included down there.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Jamie Kane. We've got four tax abatements to discuss tonight. Two of them are renewals from Mr. Tom Wellage, and then the other two are from Hitachi. They have a rather large project they're going to be undertaking, replacing some equipment that's, and if I say something that's wrong here, Greg, you can feel free to step up and correct me here. But it's equipment that's like twenty-nine years old, they're, they're going to replace this equipment. They anticipate that it'll last twenty-plus years as well. The reason there's two abatements for that is they want to, they're going to do that project in a couple phases, and so that allows them to kind of abate it as they do the two different phases of the project.
All right, so Hitachi Powdered Metals is proposing a new investment in its Greensboro, Indiana facility. The proposed project includes an investment in a new personal property of approximately seven point three five million. Currently, Hitachi employs two hundred and eighty-five people with an annual payroll of fourteen point six million. Through this investment, Hitachi intends to maintain the current level of employment, employment and salaries. So at this point, Hitachi is seeking a ten-year abatement on its personal property investment. The equipment that we're looking to purchase consists of lathes, press, equipment, machining line expansions, automation upgrades, and other supporting costs. At this point, I'll let Greg explain more about the project himself.
Okay. What this investment pertains to is, we have some production lines that were installed nineteen eighty-eight through early nineteen nineties, and we've been able to automate some of those lines, but this project primarily consists of replacing some dilapidated equipment that's extremely old, and prevents us from staying competitive. And it also is allowing us to completely automate and create linear lines to help reduce our overall cost of operating these particular production lines and help us stay competitive for selling products to our customers. So our sales really isn't going that much. However, we're making a seven million dollar investment. That investment is to maintain the sales volume as well as the employment level. It also does include some upgrades for some other equipment, primarily Ching Dover's automation, just to help us continue to improve, stay competitive in the own market market. This equipment is going to be installed, we've already purchased some of it many years ago, some of it is early, it was early two thousand one, two thousand two. So the equipment we're replacing is already over twenty-five years old. And the equipment that we're installing to replace it, we're expecting it to be able to last that long, if not longer. Also, with our products, it's very easy to switch over from one engine program to the other, which primarily requires replacement of tooling. So the equipment, you can continue to use over and over for different engine programs. So compared to maybe some other companies, when they phase out an engine, they have to pretty much remove all the equipment, start over, and then purchase a new production line, and so your, the tax base changes quite significantly because those, an engine program typically lasts like seven years, ten years. So if you think about it, you get a better deal here because you're going to always be able to tax at least three percent of cost of the equipment. A ten-year line or a seven-year line, if you give it a five year, not taxably, but you really only get to enjoy the tax revenue for a very short period of time, whereas, or this equipment, which has lasted twenty-five years, are greater, and you'll be able to, to be able to tax a couple, two, three percent of the purchase price or aggregate purchase price, I guess, for that equipment. So that's why we're asking for a ten-year tax pay.
The abatement committee reviewed the request, and basically, it was our recommendation, recommendation to give them a ten-year payment.
They're saying no new jobs, it's maintained.
It's just indirectly, it's maintained, it's actually, we're going to be adding more sales. However, for this particular area, it's going to reduce the number of jobs. However, other investments that are included here is, is for additional business. So the cost, labor cost per product sold is going down because of the result, even though labor costs sustain the same. So that's why the linearization is so important.
I think the big thing was that this, the life of this equipment is a little bit longer than what we're used to seeing. Some of the other stuff lasts, it's a little bit heavier. You know, right now, they're working with twenty-five-year-old equipment, so they've done well with that, so. Any other questions? Now, this is into two parts, we're doing the million three right now.
Yes, from two thousand seventeen.
And then, and then two thousand eighteen, January one, then this other one will take effect with this other six million dollar project. So it's a total of the seven together, but it's, that way we're not layering it on top of each other. So, that's why there's two. Okay, any other questions? Because I have a motion to accept.
The movement of the State Committee, and that motion we passed the tax pay.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Real quick, just clarification, you mean all four, or just the two for Hitachi?
Just the two for Hitachi.
Okay, probably I'll clarify that.
Yeah.
The Hitachi abatements.
Twenty seventeen dash eight and twenty seventeen dash nine.
What he said.
Yeah, that works. I was saying, that works. So, any other questions? Good question, though.
That's why I said on the side of room.
So, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's so passed.
So now we still need a motion to pass, or basically, two thousand fifteen dash seventeen and two thousand fifteen dash eighteen for the renewals for.
Thanks, guys, sorry.
Thanks, Greg.
Any issues with the renewal?
No, they met all the requirements.
Uh, move to approve.
Second?
Okay, any other questions? Are there any, all in favor, say aye.
No, we need a second, yeah.
I thought you said.
I thought you meant.
I was just asking for a second, I didn't, I didn't want to make.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, any questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Chris Tebby, I think you're next for discussing the annual orders. Kathy.
We have a draft, I think Kathy may have passed around a draft of the orders we've been talking about, amended animal control ordinance, and in light of also talking about making another section in that control ordinance regarding chickens. Was to get the council's input and direction, really, as far as the council's thoughts on incorporating all of this into one new ordinance that we're not piecemealing. That was sort of my recommendation, but I didn't want to assume that, but that's what the council wanted to do. So I think to put it on the agenda for discussion, I just to give us some guidance and what you would want included in the amended ordinance to the animal control ordinance itself. We haven't received as much, or not yet anyway, as much direction or comments from the actual animal control members. I think we likely, hopefully, receive some of that.
She's in here.
Okay.
She's here, Mike, so if you want.
Yes, they, they did not respond to me yet, so.
Not everybody knows yet. I'm lucky, I do get.
I'm Ashley, I'm the new director, I did forward the email on, I heard that from a board member, it looks good so far. We have our meeting next Tuesday, so we're going to go over it, and then contact you guys back as soon as we hear.
I don't want to draft something and then have it not work for the animal control, nor do I want to draft something and not try to read all five minds and know what kind of direction.
I have a couple questions.
Sure.
So, I mean, there's no definition of a dangerous or vicious animal. Is that defined in statute in America?
No, it's, it's in the existing animal control.
And that's where we're starting getting into the piecemeal, where there's some of the animal control still, that's not being amended by what I've drafted, whether we just want to take the entire ordinance, that chapter, not change what you don't want to change, but not piecemeal it either. So we're clear on what it is we're actually passing.
On section E, is there any kind of reporting requirement right now about ownership of a dangerous animal?
There is, the Animal Control Board does, they have to let them know that their dog is considered dangerous once an animal does attack somebody, or we have a lot of police reports, a lot of reports of the dog running loose, trying to attack. There is recording guidelines that they do have to go by, we are going to keep those in place as well.
So, so E is already precedent ordinance? And is F already precedent ordinance, the list of animals?
Yes.
So what was, what was the, what's the idea behind that? Having a list of dangerous animals?
I, I have kind of got, I'm in the middle of this, so I believe it's just so they can determine, get a better handle on what they feel is a vicious animal, to spell it out even more clear. Not only, I mean, it's not defined, it's defined in the definitions of what is a vicious animal, but the Animal Control Board wants to define what type of dog, per se, is considered a vicious animal.
That was a recommendation made by one of the other representatives from the Animal Control Board, last working with me.
I bet that is going to be included.
Next question, what is the standard to determine it, do you just go based off the statutory, or I'm sorry, the definition of the ordinance, and apply that to that particular animal?
Yes, that's what we will be doing, nothing's going to be very specific, it is all, what it's going to come down to is the aggression of the animal, and there are multiple police reports of the animal has attacked people off property numerous times, that's the guidelines that we are going to go by.
So, just so I'm clear, so F is not a list of types of animal, breeds of animals, it's a list of specific animals in the city.
And their owners.
And their owners.
Yes.
That was confusing. Kind of like the violent offender register, how we look up and see what dangerous dogs are. Complete with picture.
That'll be on Brendan's webpage.
Chris, when you reviewed, does, does the county have any ordinance, or their ordinance for the control of?
They do, Kate and I were meeting, there were some special time to try to incorporate that in the county as well, but then that just got off the side of our meeting. This was a meeting back in July, and I had.
County and city working together to.
That's, that's one, that's the thing I was talking about.
Yeah.
Jointly, review of some of our ordinances.
I think that was one of them, that was mentioned at the beginning.
And it probably should be.
I mean, I think it makes sense to take the time to do it right, versus trying to rush through and get some different. And then.
And then, on section two, the violations, are those choices? So for instance, like B says, if you violate ninety point oh three, which is what we have on section four, there's a fine of fifty dollars, and then increase, then you already have D, a fine of five hundred dollars for violation of the same section.
So, so when I was meeting with K O's, tried to build it, language ends, that number one is enforceable for the city, for the animal control, and number two, to give them some flexibility to deal with different situations. So, but again, why that language came from, first I was talking to on the board earlier.
Yeah, I guess there is a confusion, because it says, you know, B, for the first offense, it's a twenty dollar, but then when you go to two sections now, for violation of the exact same section, it's a fine of five hundred dollars.
Well, if you read on down, it says if the dangerous animal has been confiscated for violations of that section, you know, then they can be euthanized.
Right.
And I guess it has to be a pretty severe.
I guess the confusion is, you have two sections that talk about a violation of ninety point oh three, and one says you would have a fifty dollar fine for the first offense, and if it goes up from there, not exceed a thousand, but then you have another penalty standard that says five hundred dollars, and they confiscate it, and then if you don't, yeah, and if you don't, and then after they confiscate it, then you euthanize it. So I try to understand which one would be chosen.
The language wasn't very clear, and that was some of the problems I was having too, just trying to get some feedback back. too, just trying to get some feedback back, and kind of like that, we've gotta reconcile those two.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
Kathy told us to be brief, so I don't say anything else.
Any other questions? Okay, so, Chris and Ed were working through this.
Real quick, just one move up, just, does anybody have any comments on the section about chickens, or the rabbits that we put in, or just kind of, I guess, that was part of it as well, cause that'll be, that'll be an addition that'll be added to it.
Just to say that was very well thought, very specific.
So is it, is it four square feet living space per hen, or just a-
Per hen.
Per hen.
The icon might proceed, and I, I took twenty feet from any adjacent property line. It's, it's kinda like the majority of what every other city has. The only problem I proceed here is, and not that it's a big deal, but a lot of our lots are forty feet wide in town, so if someone within older parts of town wants to have a chicken, who can, they don't have to get a variance to do so.
Good point.
And, I mean, I have chickens, and they stink. I mean, I can tell the minute I get within thirty feet of them, they stink. And, they're just a nasty bird. With a good trotting. No yokes about it. Do we know how many, do we have a lot of chickens in town? Yes, I just actually gave a case to Chris on a case where we have chickens that are free range, and they have a bunch. And then we had some more, there's more, you know, another subdivision that I broke up for, and I just received another one, I had a message on my phone over the weekend of one, so.
They call it farm animals for a reason.
Well, I mean, I think putting something like this in place, it says, hey, it limits the amount you can have, and tries to do something like that. I know there's several people in the community that, that want to have them, and several communities around us allow it, I'm just, kinda, what do we wanna do?
I think the goal's to produce noise and smell, right? Produce and do something.
The only time, you know, they really make any noise is when they're about to lay. That's the only time they make any noise, sorry. They do, they make, they call it the chicken song, and I thought it was the craziest thing in the world until I heard it, and they do start with their little tune, you know. I'll just keep it at that, so.
You know, yes, I'm, I'm fine with twenty feet, if you want to, you have to respect your neighbors in the city. If you're living close together, there's certain things you just can't do, otherwise you're gonna bother them.
I'll have to get a variance while I'm getting my chickens.
You want chickens, you'd have to get a bigger place, right?
Okay, any other discussion on the animal control? Okay. Thanks, guys. Let's see. Wonder, mind you, this weekend, I think it's talks away days, so, coming up, we have the Carl Fisher Program at twelve-thirty, the historical society, and we had a little miss, mister at the four o'clock at the junior high this weekend, and then the Queen contest tomorrow, on Sunday at four, at the junior high. Ian Rock, wanna talk about GCOM?
Good evening. We have been working on for a while some improvements to the intersection of Bearishell Lane and Montgomery Road, and that is, I guess technically under construction right now, our contractors, preparatory things, in anticipation of starting in full mode on Saturday, the ninth of September, this coming Saturday. The north leg of the intersection, Montgomery Road, immediately north of Bearishell Lane, will be closed on Saturday from daylight, perhaps until dark. There's a new pipe going across the road and some other excavation that will occur to widen out the intersection. Traffic will be able to access both Hitachi and Valio from the north, and Montgomery Road will be opened through the intersect, I'm sorry, Bearishell Lane will be open through the intersection, and Montgomery Road south, going down to the high school, will be open to traffic that day. But traffic will not be able to travel north of the intersection on Montgomery Road. All of the industry has been notified, we have some advanced date signs posted, it will be closed only for the day, and the only reason that could change would be if weather becomes implemented. Forecast is very favorable at the moment, we're optimistic we can get that part of the work done. The project will run on a couple of weeks after that, but traffic, other than that one day, will be maintained through the intersection in all directions. There will be some periods of lane closures and fliers and that sort of thing, but we will not close it other than the one day.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Border Works, we're doing-
Um, the, we're gonna be talking about the survey on the extension of Key Street right away, that was tabled, was ready for presentation. Chief Bridges came and asked for permission to promote natural corn, through first class patrolmen, that was approved. We approved the nine-one-one contract, carbon, the last contract, we approved the one-year contract there. Jeff Smith came, brought number five payouts on the construction at the wastewater plant, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents, that was approved. Brought quotes for a three-quarter ton pickup truck, that bid was awarded to Don Meyer, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, twenty cents. And then Jeff, do you want to talk to us about the KB, please?
Reason I brought, I brought it up to them, they're getting a new discharge permit. You've probably seen KB's got some very large blue tanks, under the west of the facility, they're being ready to start to what we call seed. They had a anaerobic digester, we're taking our anaerobic digester material, transferring to them into their, the very largest tank, that's an anaerobic digester. What it does, it will take their waste products from their plant, convert them to methane, they'll take that methane, they're going to burn it to a generator, use electricity, the excess heat from the generator will let them put back into the anaerobic digester, well, try to maintain it with around ninety-five degrees, that's the best performance, ninety to a hundred. Right now, they, like I said, we started seeding, it'll probably take four to six days before we get enough, like, the seed out there to get, start the process, and they'll probably take another six, they thought, six to ten weeks, bring it up fully operational. They'd ask about the odors, why the plant hadn't smelled quite as bad this year, they've been adding to their, their existing treatment plant, it's anaerobic, uses oxygen, they've added, they've been adding calcium nitrate as a supplement, that takes the oxygen off the nitrate, helps supplement oxygen, but they have spent a lot of money this summer on chemicals just to do that. When they go to the other plant, they won't really have to use that at all, it'll save them a lot of money. If you kinda look, you see two large tanks, or two smaller tanks with like silver domes on top of them, that's where their plant process water comes into, they are covered, they go through ventilation, scrubbers, they take off any air, odors off that. The very largest tank is also covered, it's got a big rubber cover on top of it, that's how they capture that, they'll capture methane and that. So hopefully, within about ten weeks or so, that'll be out fully operational on the new plant, and start demolishing their old plant. Any questions?
Thank you, Ed. Now you know why I asked Jeff to explain that. And then Donald Ecker brought an adjustment to the Board of Works, nineteen hundred and sixty-one dollars, seventy-seven cents, for countless, two-seven-one-ninety-nine, that was approved. Chief Garrett asked for disposal of property, bed frame, mattress system, box springs, donated from the fire department to the transitional living center. We agreed to meet on the fourteenth of September to interview for the open fireman spot. And I believe that's it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
When do the tracks camps start?
Well, they will be in the first of October, first two weeks, is when they're planned on schedule. Scheduled to start arriving, the tracks camp. Any other questions?
Our gentleman from W T R E told me before the meeting that he would be giving a report on the recitals, some of the issues we did talk about in Board of Works, and he's noted those, and he'll be passing those on.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you. Anytime.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else? Motion adjourned? Okay, second? Okay, all in favor of that?